Hello, everyone. I'm David McClure and this is ZTV Live, bringing you the good news in Alexandria. It's Thursday, April 2nd, 2020, 7:00 PM. And thank you for joining us tonight. If you've been here before, thank you for being part of our loyal audience. And if it's a first time visit for you, welcome. And we hope we can make this an interesting show for you and that you'll come back and visit us again. So tonight, we have a very, a great pair of guests, both from the Alexandria City Government, writ large. We have Dr. Gregory, excuse me, Dr. Gregory Hutchings, Hutchings Jr., the Superintendent of Alexandria City Public Schools. And he will be interviewed by Amy Jackson, a councilwoman on the Alexandria City Council. So we're really looking forward to that. We know they're going to provide a lot of helpful information, answer a lot of your questions about what's going on in this situation with the schools. So first, I will touch on a little bit of good news and news we can all use, and then we'll move on to the interview. So, let's see, what's going on today? All right, here at the top of the news, here's a piece of news that I think we can all use, and it'll help kind of even things out. And let me bring that up. Okay, so the Women and Infants with Children Benefit, WIC, they go out about this time every month. And so the families that get those benefits, and they need those benefits, they'll be receiving money that they're really counting on to be able to go buy food and other supplies to feed their family. So of course, that's going to tend to result in them going out, you know, going shopping all sort of in a surge. So if you can even out, maybe delay a little bit before you go out and do your regular shopping, that can help everybody. It helps reduce the crowding in the stores, which is good, and it helps to sort of level out the supply and demand that the store has to face. So if you can do that, chip in that way, that would be a big help. And that comment, that suggestion is by benefit or by way of Nextdoor. So for those of you who are regular readers of Nextdoor, perhaps you already saw that. So the next piece of news is, which we announced last night, and I mangled the date, but today we've got it straight, at 8 o'clock tonight, after this show, Mayor Justin Wilson is going to be holding a live stream town hall broadcast. And he, I'm sure, has many questions that they solicited ahead of time so that he can answer, you know, provide you with information about what the city at large is doing. And that is on facebook.com/justin.net, spelled out, justin.net/live. So I definitely recommend that you go on after this show and view that. So lastly, okay, I'm going to call this my, I'm starting to call this my inspiration piece. So today, I'd like to shout out a belated happy birthday on the 60th anniversary of modern meteorology. Now, you might wonder where I came up with that. I worked for 20 years for the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and I retired from there a few years ago. And the half of NOAA, NOAA is about half of the Department of Commerce, and about half of NOAA is the National Weather Service. So in the time I was at NOAA, their official weather forecast increased from three days to five days. Now, people say, well, that's not so much, you know? But I'm not going to get into all the math, but trust me, there's a lot of it. So the difficulty of going from a one-day forecast to a two-day forecast is not twice as difficult, it's many, many times more difficult. And going to a three-day forecast is not three times, it's many, 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 many times more difficult. So you can, you can see how going out to five, you are really getting out there. Now, it turns out that 60 years ago, before the first satellite, first weather satellite, Tiros, and this is one of the first weather satellite pictures, at that time, a one-day forecast was about as accurate as our five-day forecast is now. So our one-day, two-day, three-day are leaps and bounds better than they were back 60 years ago. And that has saved a lot of lives, and saved a lot of money, and saved a lot of baseball games and picnics, too. So anyway, happy birthday. So now, and I would also like to say along that line, and this is, this is my thing, kind of a shout out to the science community, because, you know, the scientists are out there helping us to understand the world the way it is, even if it's, sometimes it's not the way we want it to be. And not only are they helping us understand that, they are helping us and our children learn how to make the world the way we want it to be. So now, we're going to go and listen to some, hear from some more people who are helping our children to be ready for the future, and to be ready to deal with circumstances good and hard when they come up. So I will now kick over to Councilwoman Amy Jackson, and she will be talking with Dr. Gregory Hutchings, Hutchings, the Superintendent of Alexandria Public Schools. So over to you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McClure. We appreciate the zebra doing this for us today. It's just a conversation between two Titans. Excited to have two Titans having a conversation, that's awesome. Dr. Greg Hutchings is with us tonight, Superintendent of Alexandria City Public Schools. And of course, education is near and dear to my heart, not just as a councilwoman in the, in the city of Alexandria, but also because my background, my career, for a long time, probably, probably not as long as yours, Dr. Hutchings, not yet, but as, as a educator and administrator for Fairfax County Public Schools, until up a few, until a few years ago, when we decided that I would take off for a few years, and, and we have two little ones, of course, at home, not so little anymore, both in elementary school here in Alexandria. And then hopefully, will probably have another door open to me later on in life, but right now, we're, we're a little busy in this city, to say the least. So I want to give you the opportunity, actually, Dr. Hutchings, to introduce yourself. And, and I know, you know, you, you're a Titan, and your career has, has led you back here, and then away again, and now back. And so I don't know if you could speak to that a little bit? And actually, how, how are you doing with your family at home? We're all at home, and going, I just realized in the last week, I am definitely a high school teacher, not an elementary school teacher. So we all have our strengths and weaknesses in this. But if you could just say a little bit about yourself, and, and how that homeschooling is going for you, and then we'll jump into all these other topics.
That's great. Well, first off, Councilwoman Jackson, I just want to say thank you, because it's always great to see our Titans doing great things out in the world. And I'm really excited about being back home. You know, there's no place like home. I always tell people that, you know, when you walk into Alexandria, if you're from here, you know, you just feel this, I can't even explain it. It's just like a feeling, a calm feeling, an exciting feeling, I'm at home. And that's what I've been feeling since I've arrived back. So I am really enjoying our time back, and our kids are loving it, too, because we live in Old Town area, so they're, we're able to walk all over the place, and, you know, really engage in all the things that the city of Alexandria has to offer. Well, used to be able to offer, because right now, we're shut down, but we will be back out soon, I hope. But we're, we're making it. My wife and I, we are like, in here, you know, I tell everybody, once a teacher, always a teacher, but it's a whole different story with your own kids.
Yes, it is.
Like, I'm the parent at home saying, I thought you had a plan, but why are you still in bed? Like, okay, it's time to get up and do something around here. Like, you're just doing nothing today. And I'm trying to really get our kids on a routine, and every week, we're trying something new. We're just trying to play it by ear, and we're struggling, like many of the other parents out here, or guardians who have children at home and trying to work at the same time, and, you know, just deal with everything that's, that's happening. So we're managing, though, I can't complain.
Well, that's, that's great, that's great. And that's a great mindset to have. I know, of course, a lot of things on social media right now are saying, you know, basically, the kids already have their routine uprooted. And of course, the last thing they want to hear at home is, you know, the parents are too busy for them, which of course, we are, because we all are working, because a lot of us are teleworking, still, still trying to bring in a paycheck. Not all of us are laid off. So this is where I do want to tell you, though, in terms of, and ask you, have, have your insight a little bit more into this. I know we are fortunate enough here in Alexandria, and kudos to you for what I'm about to say, is I, because I have a lot of friends, and we've spoken about this before, in other jurisdictions in our region, Fairfax County, Loudoun, Prince William, it just seems like we were the ones, you were the ones, your great leadership and the school system itself, the teachers were ready. They, they had their seesaw and online materials and, and the calendar ready, for the most part. They, they saw it coming. So just between Zoom, seesaw, all the other technology that we have in Alexandria, we seem to be the leaders and have been so progressive that other jurisdictions that are honestly, usually the ones not, you know, that are usually ready and on it, and everyone's turning around going, oh, we need to follow them, they're looking at us, saying, how did you do this so quickly? So my kids, I know, two to three times a week at least, we're already meeting with the teachers and have been for the last three weeks. On Zoom, they've been having their class meetings, we've been getting our materials through email and seesaw for the elementary school. It just, it seems like they didn't skip a beat, which is great for them in terms of routine and, and their learning. For the parents who have skipped a few beats, we are trying to make sure that we are keeping up with how technology is supposed to be on all these computers and laptops and cellphones and Chromebooks. So if you could, if you could just tell us how, how this happened? I mean, what a phenomenal job you and your staff have done to create, to create this new space, this new normal for our kids.
That's right. You know, well, first of all, let me just say, well, thank you for, for the compliment. You know, we do have some outstanding staff members, and I think they're very resilient, you know? I think what, how, what we were able to do is that, as we knew things were transpiring across the country, we had started just getting prepared for the day that we knew we were going to need to close our doors. We're very fortunate in Alexandria to already have a one-to-one technology device for all of our kids in grades three through 12. So that's something that, you know, we started back when Rebecca Perry was superintendent, you know, of Alexandria City Public Schools, so several years ago. So our staff and our students, particularly in grades three through 12, had already been accustomed to interacting online. Not every day like we're doing now, but it was something that wasn't foreign to, you know, to our, to our staff and our students. And we began to immediately, once we started seeing that, you know, the state of Washington was closing schools, and California were closing schools, and Ohio started, and I said, well, eventually, we may be closing, so let's, let us get prepared now, and let us get all of our materials in order. So on March 13th, when we made the decision to close our schools prior to even, you know, the governor closing our schools, we wanted to make sure that when our students left on that Friday, that they had the resources that they were going to need to have. And we still have some, you know, some challenges and some barriers. We're still trying to work with ensuring that all of our kids have internet access, because, you know, they have the Chromebooks, but we can't say 100% of our families have access. But Comcast has been doing a phenomenal job, working with us and some of our families. We are also coming up with some creative ways of having internet services for our families. And, you know, I just think us preparing at a very rapid pace and continuing to have that engagement with our staff, as well as with our students, is allowing us to just stay the course and to get ahead.
Fantastic, fantastic. Can you speak a little bit to, now, you're saying grades three through 12 have, have those Chromebooks? So the younger kids that need to, of course, keep reading especially, and keep learning their numbers, and learning the writing skills, they've got the social skills really with Zoom and our classroom meetings, if, if we have, you know, if parents have cellphones to use to get on, to get on those meetings. So how, is, is there anything else that can be done other than cellphones for the technology for the, for the younger kids, the preschool and kindergarten through second grade?
Yes, and actually, yeah, preschool, kindergarten through second grade, honestly, because, you know, and I think back when our kids were that age, you know, we did not want them on a screen all day, right? And we don't even want them to get used to it, because it's so easy to get addicted to being on a screen, or a phone, or a computer. And our staff, they realize that as well. So what we're working towards with our extended continuity of learning plan is providing kits for all of our students in pre-K through 12. And these are kits that have crayons, and markers, and puzzle pieces, and different activities, so that they're doing some more hands-on experiences at home. And we're going to be pre-recording some directions and some activities that go along with these kits, that they'll, will be able to either watch on a screen, like a phone or a computer, or on our local television station. So parents will be able to turn on the television, and the teacher that a student may recognize or know will be going through a learning demonstration with the actual kits that they have at home, you know, with them. So those are like some of the ideas that we are, that we're working towards. And we're also providing our families just with some strategies that they can use with their students. You know, I was sharing in one of my daily videos that, this past weekend, you know, we took our kids on a scavenger hunt in the car. Like, we didn't get out of the car, we drove, and we drove for about an hour and 15 minutes. We went to DC, to Tyson's, you know, back home. But we were able to use this scavenger hunt checklist and just check different things off that you see, and it, you know, helps you with your critical thinking, and it was a really good activity that, you know, our ninth grader, she participated, she didn't love it, but she participated. And our fourth grader loved it, you know, to death. So we just have to be a little more creative with being home.
Agreed, agreed. I know we've been having some really interesting conversations lately. We've been having a lot of discussion that's bringing in other aspects of what the teachers would like. So really, without, well, most of the time, trying to do the packets that we were sent home with. But, but if we can't do that, or have time to do that, or have, the, the kids, of course, their attention spans are shorter, and I know, being the teacher, if I had a 90-minute block period, it was always rule of three, right? What three activities can I do for 30 minutes each that, okay, I'll lecture, and I'll have a, you know, we'll get in groups, and then maybe a group quiz or project, or doing something technologically? So it's, it's difficult, but at least some of those pieces are pulled in from the packets if we're talking about science and water, right? We turn on, you know, Channel 4, Doug Cameron's got something at 2 o'clock to teach us about lightning or clouds or something every day that he's been doing. And so, but also, as you mentioned, I know, ACPS, the TV channel, they've also put out there some great, great videos, you know, dinosaurs, and, and, you know, just different topics that the kid, you know, sometimes the kids, when they see it, they're like, oh, this, this looks boring, and I think, okay, well, that might be a little bit above your grade level, but then let's find a book, or use Raz Kids Online to, to find something that you can read and understand. So we take a concept, and then we just put it on their level, if, if at all possible. So we, we appreciate you bringing the classroom to, to a virtual level. That's, and, and I also want to bring up for elementary schools, the encore teachers have been getting on some of our, you know, so they get to see their PE teachers, and their music teacher, and their art teacher, and, and so that, that's great, too, to continue the connections. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the rest of the year. I know there's a lot to discuss. I know Alexandria is one of the school systems, or at least my particular school, in the school system, so hopefully, all, all of the system is, is going to try to introduce some more learning in the fourth quarter after, after spring break. So we've been told, even though no one can go anywhere, the teachers are, you know, everyone's homebound, just like the rest of us, pretty much, so they just need a mental break and prepare for, you know, the, the next nine weeks of the, of the fourth quarter.
That's right. So we are, yeah, and we're going to be issuing our extended continuity of learning plan, actually, tomorrow. So it's going to go live tomorrow for, for all of our community to see. And really, what it is, is it's an extension of the work that we're currently doing. You know, we're already doing the Zoom meetings and things of that nature, but we are going to have a professional learning day on April 13th for teachers and staff. So students won't come back till the 14th, but we'll have a professional learning day, is what we're recommending to the board for April 13th, so that it will provide an opportunity for us to really build some capacity with our staff members on all of the things that you actually can do, and features that are a part of Zoom, some things that you can do with Google Voice, with WeVideo, so they can begin to record their own, you know, videos at home, and do demonstrations, and post them, and send them to kids, and have them as links, you know, just a lot of different creative things that we're going to be working with our staff on, so that we can develop some new material for, for our students, which is, which is going to be a great.
That's going to be great. Any, like TikTok dance moves that are going to be recorded?
You know, we've been talking about TikTok, actually, I've been trying to learn, my TikTok, my, and my daughter, she is like, daddy, I'm going to show you, but she still has not shown me this TikTok. We tried it one day, and I couldn't, it was going too fast for me, so.
We definitely need a video of you doing that.
So you're going to get my TikTok video, when I get it down, you are all going to get my TikTok.
Okay, that's good. Deal, deal.
And, you know, I think that the physical activity component is so important for, for our young people. I know every day for me, I'm able to do training with my personal trainer from Get Fit in Alexandria, but of course, we can't go to Get Fit studio, so he's doing it through Zoom. I mean, I'm working out every day from 12 to 1:00, and that allows me to still get that physical activity. It's also a stress reliever for, for anybody. So I recommend everyone to go out and walk, or run, or exercise, whatever you choose to do, including our.
Absolutely. Yes, very lucky to have a, an, some open space right next to our house, that that's exactly, I was out there, beautiful day today, and just, I think that was the first time I'd been away from my family by myself for probably the two to three weeks that we've been home. So that was definitely, and the kids knew, they're like, mommy, go get unstressed. It's like, oh, what are you trying to say? What are you trying to say? So, well, to continue on with, with the rest of the year, I know a lot of, a lot of questions are resolved, revolving around, will people be graded? Will the kids get graded? We have the AP tests that really, you know, how are we dealing with? I know that's always a big thing, even with what, what the start of school is every year, that I know the West Coast is always a, a few weeks ahead in the AP world before our kids on this side, and of course, then that's instruction lost, and the AP test has a, has a specific date that they're given. So when we talk about AP testing, and I know there was an announcement yesterday about the SOL tests, and then, of course, we have all the seniors that they're losing out on the rest of their year, and how sad for them, and then how sad, of course, for the parents that were so, you know, just ready for 12th grade, and they're going to move on in their life to, to college, or whatever the next step for them is, and here, you know, it's gone in the blink of an eye because of this crisis. So if you could discuss some of those paramount issues for our seniors.
Yes, well, you know, first, let me just start with our seniors, because, you know, my heart goes out to our seniors, as well as our, you know, our families who have seniors, because their senior years, it's just not the same, right? So they don't get that traditional experience that many of our seniors have, have gotten.
And us.
Say, and us, we got, we got it, too, you know, one to type, all to type.
I didn't get the graduation, I got the, but I got everything else.
So, you know, like, I think that what, but what we do get to do is use this as an opportunity as well. And Mr. Pete Ballas, our high school principal, his staff, and many of our senior class officers and senior class members, they're working on what are going to be some innovative ways of us celebrating our seniors. Whether, you know, there were some ideas talking about a virtual prom, having a virtual commencement ceremony, and all those different types of things that we're going to be working through to make, to make that happen. And I think this is a good opportunity for us to take advantage, you know, of, of that. Another area that I think is important is like our SOLs, as well as our AP exams, and ACT exams, and SAT exams, they have all been up in arms in, in a lot of ways, you know? First off, the SOLs, thankfully, they're going to be waived for the year, so we don't even have to worry about SOL exams. Final exams are not going to happen in any of our classes this year because of the early closure. And then also with the AP exams, the College Board has stated that these, the AP exams this year are going to be online, and they're going to be modified. So it's going to be non-traditional for how students take these exams, but they will still have an opportunity to, to engage, you know, in, in some of these exams. I think the advantage that we do have is this is not just an Alexandria issue, it's a national issue. So colleges and universities are, you know, having waivers and making modifications to how students are being, you know, evaluated or accepted into their colleges and prepared for the college experience. So everyone is kind of doing this all hands-on deck approach to make these adjustments and refinements, you know, for our seniors, as well as all of the testing that needs to occur this break.
Do you, do you foresee having some type of graduation, even if later in the summer?
So we've been having discussions about that, so there's a committee that's working on that, and they're going to provide us with some recommendations on what the senior class and the staff want to do. And I haven't gotten those recommendations as of yet. I know they're going to really start working on that after spring break, so that we could have a recommendation, so I'll have some more to share with you. Tomorrow, we are, and I wanted to answer your, your final question about the grading, because tomorrow, we are proposing, or making a proposal to the board regarding our grading policy. Specifically, what we want to be able to do is, for our elementary schools, we already have a grade that is called Introduce, but not Assess. It's called an INA grade. And that's something that we want to put on our report cards, because we're going to be introducing some new standards to our students, but we're not assessing our kids in pre-K through 5, between now and the end of the academic year. So this will allow us to still have students engaged, still have new learning material, new things and activities for them to work on at home, but it won't be assessed the way we typically do if we were in school, meaning in-face instruction. For our secondary students, that's middle and high school, it's a little different. So for third quarter, they will still receive, what we're proposing is that they still receive a letter grade, but the work that's graded is only work that was, was assigned on or before March the 13th, and that was the day that we closed our school buildings. So that will allow students to still receive a third quarter letter grade. What we are proposing to the board is that we extend our third quarter by two weeks after spring break, so through April 24th. So when we get back from spring break, students actually have an opportunity to, to do any makeup work, makeup assignments, and have an opportunity to turn those assignments in, so it can actually make your grade higher than you anticipated it to be. For fourth quarter, what we are proposing to the board is that we do a pass or no grade for secondary students, and that's middle and high school students. So a pass would be a P on the report card, and the advantage of a pass is that it is for a student who has completed at least 60% of the activities that are being assigned to them between now and the end of the year. So if they complete 60%, they receive a P. That P equates to 100 for that quarter. So you actually get an A, you know, for that quarter, if you complete at least 60% of those assignments. Or you can get an NG, which doesn't hurt your grade. So that means you've, you've completed less than 60% of the activities between now and the end of the school year, so it doesn't hurt your grade at all. So it just allows us then to calculate first, second, and third quarter grades to get a final grade. Whereas if you get a P, we'll calculate first, second, third, and then you'll have 100 for fourth calculated to your final grade, which gives you a little boost and an incentive to get your work done for our middle and high school students.
And just to, just to kind of go off that a little bit, not to get in the weeds too much, but do we know how colleges are going to be looking at these grades along with the , I mean, this, it's not like we're the only ones in the United States or globally that it's not like we're the only ones in the United States or globally that is reacting to this. So do, have we had any input?
Exactly, so we have. So we've heard from many colleges and universities are going to the pass-fail grading system, even for their colleges and universities. And then they're also looking at what all the different schools are doing in regards to their grading, meaning high schools for high school credit courses. We followed, fortunately, the Virginia Department of Education provided all Virginia school divisions with some guidelines to follow. So we used the grading guidelines that came from the V D O E or the Virginia Department of Ed. And that helped us to craft the recommendation that we're making to the board tomorrow. So it's it's in line with what most school divisions are going to do throughout the the Commonwealth of Virginia. And I'm sure what most school divisions across the country will be doing. So it it shouldn't have a negative impact on any of our students who are are preparing to enter college now or in the future, which which is an advantage that this is a national issue. So it's something that all colleges and universities really have to put into consideration. It's it's not really a choice at this point.
Great. Thank you for for talking about all that today. I ju- I just really have one more question, which I know will take a while in answering since it's multifaceted, but we are such a tight-knit community and always have been and always will be. And Alexandria City Public Schools really, really, you know, picked up the baton and ran with it when it came to partnering with the city and the business community and our health department, nonprofits. So concerning this global crisis, the COVID nineteen, you know, you all really stepped it up to get the food out to our community and and have been for the last few weeks. And I know spring break is going to be a little, a little different because it's spring break. So of course, I think the city is going to take over a couple of days and we're going to have some different partnerships trying to get the food out at the different locations. But every day I I see the the text blasts, you know, saying, and we've got a couple more pop-up food locations that you can go to and you can, you know, so it it, the it it's just an amazing feat, really, about who has come together and what nonprofits. I know Alive has been a a big proponent, big provider of of the food as well as the schools. So if you could talk to us about the food aspect, and then I also know a lot of your staff members, especially school nurses, I believe there's eleven or so that have, because not being in the schools, they're able to give their credentials and their experience to our health department to help with what is coming, right?
Absolutely.
So if you if you could talk a little bit about that, that'd be great.
So, you know, you know, when we, when we think of the food and meal distribution that we provide our students, students are not going to be able to learn without meals at home. And we are also seeing that, you know, we're now not just seeing the students who typically receive free and reduced lunch. Some families have been impacted by being laid off of jobs. And, you know, rent was due yesterday for many of our families, whether you had a job or not. And a lot of our families are in a crisis. And we're seeing that we have, we have a lot more families who are coming out to get these meals and relying on these meals that we are providing to our schools. I have to give a shout out to our school nutritional team because Cindy Hormel, who is our school nutritional director, she is such a phenomenal leader, who really, the moment we decided we were going to have to close our schools, she and her team got together and they began to strategize on how we're going to be able to have these meal distribution in Alexandria. And we initially started at T C and having everybody come to T C. And we realized that, you know, when we were at T C, we had so many people who were in need that we needed to expand our distribution centers from one location to multiple locations throughout the city. And then we had to really revamp our entire schedule and our working schedule for our food service, you know, employees who are phenomenal, who are also doing this work. But, you know, Cindy Hormel and her team, they worked it out. And we are collaborating very closely with with the city. I want to thank, you know, the city, particularly, I want to thank Kate Garvey because she worked just this week with with Cindy Hormel. And they were able to strategize on how do we still serve our families over the winter, over the spring break? Because there were concerns that, you know, we we do need to try to find an opportunity for our for our staff to have some type of break at some point because they've been working, you know, extensive hours over the past few weeks. And how are we going to be able to manage that and still keep our students at the forefront? And the city, you know, really stepped up and said, you know, we can help next week and we can give you all, you know, a little time off and just have a portion of your members work collaboratively with the city and we can do this. And, you know, Kate Garvey and Cindy Hormel, they strategized and they worked it out. And next week, we are going to be able to offer our meal distribution on Wednesday and Thursday from nine A M. to twelve P M. at T C for our families. And then Alive is going to offer this this Saturday, April fourth, they're going to actually offer opportunities for families to receive up to four grocery bags of food. And you can pick that up between eight and eleven-thirty at John Adams and also at Core Kelly or the rec center at Core Kelly. So, you know, this is just a way that we have been able to make sure that our families' needs are being met on on a daily basis. Because some kids, they just don't have meals and they rely on coming to school each day to to eat.
Well, I I thank you again, Dr. Hutchings, for for this time. I know it's time taken away from your family. I know we're doing a lot of Zoom conferences and teleconferences now at home. So home, hometown, home life and and business life are kind of, they're all, they're all. They are, that's exactly.
That's all I can.
Someone posted about, okay, I'm I'm working from eight fifty-three to nine o'clock and then I'm back and I'm working nine forty to, you know, ten fifty, you know, everything because it's, you know, the day has gotten longer and yet not, just a, just a different normal, right? So I really appreciate it. I know our community really appreciates it. Keep up the great work and I know we're all going to get through this together. So thank you again for talking with us and the zebra. And I'll I'll let you say any any parting words.
Yes, I just want to want to say thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. And, you know, our city and the schools, you know, we go hand in hand and we are a great team. You know, we couldn't do it without the support from the city and vice versa. So we just appreciate what you do for us. I'm able to still meet with our city manager, Mark Jinks. He is doing a phenomenal job as our leader in our city, as well as our mayor, Justin Wilson. He's doing a phenomenal job as well, leading these efforts in what we're doing. And I just want to commend you all for that. And our team, you know, we have some of the most selfless, you know, staff members who genuinely care about the well-being of not only our students, but our staff and their families. And that, to me, is just amazing. I, I, you know, as a superintendent of a school division where we have so many people who care so much, it makes me proud to be able to serve a community. And then for this to be my hometown is like icing on the cake. So I, I'm to be back home at this time, to be in the position that I that I'm in at this time and having such a great team to make it through this really tough time. But it's better together than alone. So I know that we are stronger as a team than we are as individuals. And I just ask that we keep it going on behalf of not only our kids, but also the city of Alexandria that I do love so much.
Me too. Great words. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Hutchings, I appreciate it. I'm going to throw this now back over to David McClure, who's in charge of this wonderful broadcast.
Well, thank you, Amy. Yes, thank you. I'm leaving. You guys are still on screen. So I wanted, while you're on screen, I wanted to say thank you so much for such an informative show. It was a pleasure listening to you. I I think y'all had a nice rapport. That that always makes it nice. And and I I could tell from the from the chat that you were definitely hitting on on concerns that people had. And so I would encourage you and the viewers, once the broadcast ends, it'll very quickly come up as a as a recorded interview. And I suggest you share that, you know, ten or twelve thousand shares each and we'll really have something going. But I'm sure your, I'm sure your constituency, your shareholders, Councilwoman Jackson and Superintendent Hutchings, I'm sure your communities of interest would find the the discussion y'all had very helpful. So I want to thank you again and and thank you on behalf of the zebra and on behalf of of the viewers for helping out. And I'm going to let you go off camera now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, everyone, so that was a great show. That was a great show and I really enjoyed that and I hope that they answered a lot of your questions and got you thinking about other other things, you know, other things that you might do and any way that you can help. So I think that we will wrap that up tonight. And, oh, one more thing. After you send out your ten or twelve thousand shares and likes on tonight's video, remember at eight o'clock, the mayor will be talking to the city. And I encourage you to go there and and watch that. That is, I will repeat that again, that is at, oh, I'm sorry, I've lost the, I've lost the link. So anyway, go ahead and do a search on that. I'm sure on Facebook, I'm sure you won't have any trouble finding it. And before we go, remember, be the good news in someone's life. Good night, everyone.